It's not evident in motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Plord, seconded by Councilor Manke. Any discussion on approving the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
Repose or abstain? Motion carries unanimously.
All righty, moving on to presentations. First, tonight, we are going to do a proclamation. July is Recreation and Parks Month, and we have a proclamation honoring that. Whereas, the Newington Parks and Recreation Department, the department, was established in 1956 to enhance the quality of life in Newington and foster community connections. And whereas, the department organizes over 800 programs annually to Newington residents aged 1 to 100, resulting in more than 9,000 registrations and over 150,000 discreet visits to the Mortenson Community Center annually. And whereas, the department strives to provide accessible facilities and recreational programming that can accommodate all Newington residents. And whereas, the department hosts numerous public events throughout the year, earning accolades such as the prestigious Program of Merit Award from the Connecticut Recreation and Parks Association, CRPA, for its Night of Lights special event and the Exercise the Right Choice After School program. In addition, the department has received statewide recognition for events such as Newington Goes Country, Food Truck Friday, the Water Lantern Festival, and the Life Be In It Extravaganza. And whereas, the department has established vital public-private partnerships with the various organizations and businesses in both Newington and neighboring communities, contributing to the success of our events and programming. And whereas, the department's six full-time administrative staff, 15 full-time ground staff, and army of seasonal employees provide the highest level of service to the residents and businesses of Newington in support of the department's goals. And whereas, July is officially designated as National Recreation and Parks Month by the National Recreation and Parks Association, NRPA. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the Newington Town Council recognizes July as Recreation and Parks Month in Newington and celebrates the indispensable role of the Parks and Recreation Department in our community, dated in Newington, Connecticut, this 10th day of June 2025.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second. Any discussion on this from Council? Councilor Boudreaux.
Yeah, just in recognition of this is a national event and also the contributions of our Parks and Recreation Department here in Newington. We certainly know that they're dedicated and they work hard here in our staff to provide valuable programming to the Newington community. And the type of events and the programming really generates community spirit and fun, while also promotes health and well-being. An important part that I don't think was necessarily mentioned in the proclamation was Parks and Rec is responsible in maintaining, you know, our dwindling green space and open space and making it clean, safe, and accessible, because there are those who also enjoy passive and individual recreational pursuits, while they can take in the scenic views of the ponds and the trees. So we appreciate Parks and Rec, in addition to the programming, the fact that they're maintaining our few parks and green space that is available for the public. So I want to thank Bill and his staff for their positive impact on the community.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Plord.
Thank you, Mayor. Just echoing a lot of the points that Councilor Boudreaux has made, we have the best Parks and Rec department in the state of Connecticut. And I'm just going to say the best in the country just because I can. And that's because we have Bill DeMayo, who enough cannot be said about your leadership and the team of staff that you've built around you and fostered around you for many years. Your programming, the programming that Parks and Rec does, makes us all extremely proud to call Newington home and welcome so many new faces to our town every single day. So we're so grateful for your work, the work that your department does, and especially your work, obviously, keeping our parks accessible too, particular work that you focused on to improve accessibility. So we just thank you and thank the department for all the work that you've done and are happy to continue to support the department in doing that great work.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Page.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you, Bill, to you and all of your staff for everything my colleagues have said. And we appreciate you very much. It is one of the things, our beautiful parks and recreation activities that make Newington such an amazing place. So thank you so much, and please extend that to everyone who works with you and for you under your leadership. We appreciate you very much. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Nagel.
Thank you, and thank you, Bill, and thank you, Parks and Rec Department, for not only outstanding programs that have been recognized statewide, also the vital public-private partnerships you've done to bring the business community to feel they have a vital part of what the town deserves. The Parks and Rec Department, previously, all the things that Parks and Rec does on a day-by-day basis to provide experiences for the entire community. Enough thanks can't be said, and we should appreciate what you and your staff do day after day, be it the major events or be it the day-by-day things, including continually taking care, maintaining, and improving parks. Over the last several years, on a monthly or yearly basis, we've been improving the quality of the parks around the town and bringing well-deserved recreational opportunities for the entire community. Thank you again.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Manke.
I would just add my thanks to Superintendent DeMayo for organizing such a great department and certainly his staff and his administrators, and also the volunteers who put in all the efforts. I know there's a lot of volunteers, countless volunteers, who do sometimes the behind-the-scenes work, that just work at Extravaganza or work at the... Newington Goes Country is Friday and... No, Thursday and Food Truck Friday is Friday. So there's volunteers that help out there that sort of go unsung, but just all those people who work together to make Newington and Newington Parks and Recreation a better place, a better organization. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Captain, Mayor Allen.
Yes, Bill, I just want to add my thanks and to you, to the staff, to the volunteers, for everything that you do all together throughout the year. We certainly all appreciate what's done. And while we're celebrating this through the month of July, I want to say we celebrate you all throughout the entire year. So thank you once again.
Councilor Teniacus.
Yeah, Bill, you and your staff, you really kill it with everything that you do. You provide so much for the community. So I just want to say thank you. And just looking at like all the surrounding towns and what they do, I think you really set the gold standard for what it means to be a Parks and Rec department and get the community involved. So thanks.
Thank you, Councilor.
Bill, I've gotten the opportunity to see some of the work that you do firsthand in not just as mayor, but in what you do for the greater community. I mean, we talk about Food Truck Friday, the Extravaganza. We know those things are awesome and the best ever, but what people don't see is all the work that you do with all the youth sports in town. You know, football, Little League Soccer, Lacrosse. These are all private entities of their own. And, you know, you work so closely with all these entities to ensure that the thousands and thousands of kids in Newington that participate in youth sports have places to do this in that are safe, well-maintained. And it's amazing, because you go above and beyond. And we say that and we know that, but people don't always see that. And it's important that we get to recognize this, because you guys do go above and beyond for this community. And we're incredibly grateful to have you. As Councilor Plord said, we have the best Parks and Recreation Department in the nation, and that's a fact. So congratulations, Bill. We really appreciate that. Come on up and get this.
Just a point of order, we need to vote.
Oh, that's right. Oh. Got a motion and second. Any further discussion for Councilor?
The mic is to your left. Keep going. But it's towards me.
Okay, thanks. There you go.
Thank you.
As Councilor Manke pointed out, we have to vote. Motion and second. Or we didn't do it. That's right. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained?
Motion carries unanimously.
Now you're up.
Okay, thank you. Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for the kind words. And just to let you know, it's a privilege and an honor to be the coach or the leader of this great Parks and Recreation team. You're looking at a guy that took swimming lessons, my first swimming lessons at Churchill Pond. So I knew Clem Lemire, and my family knew Clem Lemire, and I knew his wife. And it's just been a wonderful ride here to come here in '81, to stay a few years, and then go get some experience in a city and then bring all the nice positive things back to Newington. So it's been a pleasure. You guys have mentioned it. We have a team that's unbelievable. And I may be the face of it, but I am not. The workers, the park guys are so unbelievable. The Recreation Division, effortless. You know, they're unbelievable as far as day and night working. They're all out tonight doing stuff and tomorrow, and then Thursday and Friday and Saturday. The cemetery crew, unbelievable. I had the opportunity in my young career to be on the National Parks and Recreation APRS Board, and I've seen everywhere in the country. And we've set the standard here in Newington for sure, as some of you have mentioned. And that's because people work so hard and they're dedicated and they love Newington. It's just something cool. Life be in its mantra is put more into life and in return, get more out of it, enjoy life more. And I think that's been my standard. I've lived by enjoying life the best I possibly can. And the more you put into it, is the more you get out of it. And I can't say enough good about our staff. And as far as our ball fields, and you guys have allowed us to buy the best equipment. You've supported me all the way through getting automatic paint machines for soccer fields and football and automatic laser gun treatments and things like that. That is all, doesn't go unnoticed, right? It's a team effort by this whole community. And we've got the best equipment, the best guys. We put it to use, we do it for things faster and quicker. It's the formula that works. So I'm thankful, and all my park staff and recreation staff are thankful to you guys for all your support over the years. We're appreciative. I just want to say that you're all invited to the special events that you talked about. Tomorrow night, we have the cutest event in the world. It's the graduation of the preschool program kids, 3 through 5. And we have 19 kids graduating out of 34 younger kids. And you're not going to believe this, but I think we have over 225 adults coming to us. Nancy goes, "I don't know if we have enough food, you know, money for food." I go, "Don't worry. Well, it'll be okay." So that's going to be a cute one. And then Thursday night, we go into the Newington Coast Country. You're all invited. You'll love it. Friday's Food Truck Friday, and it's just an exciting time of year for us. We're getting, May was Water Safety Month, so we celebrated that. And in July, of course, the Extravaganza, you know, it's a signature program for all of us in Newington, I think. And you'll see lots of new things, plus the good old things. So we kind of kept making a combination of both. And then, of course, the ADA celebration in July is the 35th anniversary of the ADA. We're teaming up with Carol LaBrec from Social Services and going to do a really fun thing that night. And it'll be exciting, and I think you'll all enjoy every aspect of it. So on that, I say thank you very, very much. Again, I'm just the team coach, but everybody that works for us is fabulous. And our hundreds of volunteers are unbelievable. Our young high school and college kids, we have a couple hundred camp staff and pool staff, and they all bleed for this town and they love the people in it, and they do a great job. So when you see them, thank them and pat them on the back or something and say, "Lifeguard, you're doing a great job." Or a summer camp person, "Thank you so much for taking care of my kid or my grandchild." With that, I thank you and thanks for celebrating and taking the time to recognize July as Recreation and Parks Month.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
All righty. Thank you so much, Bill. Moving on to item B, Garfield Street Connectivity Grant Project. Chris Sabideo is here. You are up, sir.
So for the record, Chris Sabideo, town engineer, and take a moment just to recognize Bill, because that's quite an act of honor, buddy. So this project, in some form, has been around since 2018. It started off as a community connectivity grant, and that community connectivity grant is still part of the project. But it has been delayed several times, first by the construction of Town Hall and also by over a referendum, which obviously, if it had gone across the street, would have impacted how this would have turned out as a project. The point of the grant is to connect Market Square area and the Mill Pond Park areas. So it's truly a community connectivity project. It was composed of dedicated bike lanes in Garfield, improved crosswalks, completing a sidewalk route from Willard to Main and to the park. It also includes what we call rapid flashing beacons, or some people call rectangular rack and flashing beacons, RFBs. So these are these lighted crosswalk warning signals that a user activates. And the ones we intend to install even have little spotlights to light up the crosswalk. Kind of an interesting little feature, I think. Since then, this seven-year delay has allowed us to do other improvements to the area. Projects that would have happened anyway, but if this project had been built on schedule, these other things would have come later. So one of those is our electric vehicle charging station grant, which we got, that's part of the Volkswagen Settlement program. And the infrastructure for that system is installed. It's in the ground now. We are waiting on a transformer from EverSource. Apparently, transformers are scarce these days. When that's installed, the actual pedestals for the charging stations will be installed. There's no real point in installing them until the transformer's in, because, you know, you don't want to put a garbage bag over your brand-new charging station. I can't get you a time for that, because EverSource moves at EverSource's pace. And related to the EVCS project, we had a lighting improvement project in that same parking lot. This is the one below the library parking lot. So we've upgraded all of the lights that are in that parking area to be more energy-efficient. They're LEDs instead of the old style lights we had there. And they match the ones that are in the library parking lot, so they all look the same. I alluded to the project growth. So over those seven years, in addition to the community connectivity grant and the vehicle charging station grant, other work has come along that has become necessary. And this is the Town Hall parking lot, which was used as a staging area for the construction of this building. And it did not get reconstructed or repaved or anything like that after that. And it is in pretty rough shape. So that's been on our agenda for a while. That's also going to have some small drainage improvements and grading, so stormwater flow flows off of it in a better way than it does now. Garfield Street is now in need of a mill and overlay, and that was a project that had come along during my predecessor's timeframe. And since the time has passed to now, Mr. Hillman and I had decided that it makes the most sense not just to do the mill and overlay of the part that we were going to do, but to carry it all the way to Main Street, because that section that we weren't going to do with this project originally was going to come up in a few years anyway. So, you know, project efficiency-wise, it made sense to swap that section of Garfield that wasn't going to get done with another street in town and do the whole thing in one swoop. So that's part of this now. And the parking lot at the Willard end of Garfield, that little former part of the road before the road was realigned, if we're going to use it as a parking lot, we should treat it like a parking lot. So we decided, we mostly take it upon myself, I'm not going to blame anybody else, to reconstruct that parking lot as well. So that's part of the project now. And of course, the Board of Ed bus parking lot, the gravel parking lot that we have now, we're going to surface that. But we're also going to add a water quality treatment device to the catch basin at the end of the system. There's three catch basins there, and they outlet into Mill Brook, right by the bridge there by the bus garage. Currently, this water goes untreated. And that just basically means whatever runs off the parking lot goes into the catch basin and down into the brook. By putting a water quality treatment device on this, hydrogen separator is what we call them. At least, that's the one I specify. There's other types. Now that we're going to pave this parking area, and we all know motor vehicles drip various forms of gasoline, oil, et cetera, that runoff would have just gone into the brook untreated or into the ground, as it is now. So by paving it and collecting anything that runs off of the buses now, we can treat it through this device and maintain it and keep our brook clean. At least, that's the intent. This is something that we would make a developer do, so there's no reason we shouldn't do it ourselves. Let's see, where am I at here? Okay, so that's now the scope of the whole project. This is how we've come to be where we are now with what we're doing. And of course, finally, the, I'm going to call it the elephant in the room, the tree issue. Now, the white pines at the end of the park, unfortunately, are located in a really bad place in terms of this project. Part of the connectivity aspect of the grant is to provide sidewalk access to the park. Now, we have that driveway slash sidewalk where the crosswalks are now, over by the police department parking lot, but that is not considered an accessible route for ADA or any other real form of access for anybody who's not fully fit. So the parking lot, excuse me, the pavement we're going to be doing, I say parking lot, because we're going to do it as a bit culminous pavement. I just had that in my head. We've relocated it as best we can to make the minimum amount of impact to these trees. And it's just not going to work out well for them. And here's the reasons for this. These are what we call mature white pines. They're roughly 45, 50 feet tall. They're at their end of their life cycle. And when a tree like that gets to the point where its height-to-root base ratio exceeds 2.5, which these are, these are relatively shallow root system trees, their propensity to tip over in a storm is very high. Now, if it was out someplace else in the park, it wouldn't matter that much. But in that area where those five trees are, we have the water service to the bus garage. We have the water service to the park. We have the electrical power through the park. We have the fiber optic to the park. We have overhead electric along Garfield and overhead electric to the park. They all run through that stand of trees. Now, I'm going to cut into those roots when I put the base down for this path, this path having to have certain grade requirements to meet ADA as an accessible route. And so the decision had to be made to take these trees down. And that responsibility is mine. I made that decision. So we're going to replace these trees with a series of dogwoods and magnolias, which I pick only because I like them. If you guys like something else, let me know. These are nice flowering trees. I have a dogwood in my yard. It's flowering right now. And if anybody has a suggestion for our favorite tree, let us know. And the intent is, when this new path is constructed, we'll line it with these trees, and it will be, I believe, an improvement to the park at the unfortunate loss of the white pines. So this is in that category of asset management, which is basically what I do for you. This is, the trees are an asset, the park is an asset. This is a compromise, if you want to call it that. They have to go for other things to come. And then I think at the end, it's going to be a beautiful product. But we have to get there. So now it's time for questions. I should have been scrolling through this, but I just get wrapped up in my old... These are nice colored PDFs and everything. I have a PowerPoint for you and all that, and then I just skip by by it. So it's time for questions. If I didn't cover anything that you are interested in.
Councilor Plord.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chris, so much for being here and for all that information and for all your work on this project, which seems to have ballooned into many other things.
Every time I share it with somebody, it grows or changes.
I bet, I bet. I'm very excited in particular about your decision to reconstruct that parking lot at the end of Garfield next to Willard. I've seen that since I was a kid and wondered, you know, what's going to happen there. Can you just kind of talk a little bit about your thoughts? It may be too early, but what that kind of looks like is, does it mean the piece of grass that's there gets cut out and it becomes more of a robust parking lot? Or what does that look like?
So we didn't want to take, you know, a hatchet to this, so to speak. It was more of a, what is there now is the remains of the road. And it doesn't drain as well as it could, because it really wasn't juventrally set up to be a parking lot. So what we've done is we tweaked it a little bit. We're going to take out the asphalt that's there. We're going to grade it a little bit so that it slopes to that grass area between Garfield and the parking lot where there's already a catch basin, so that rainwater will run off of that into that catch basin. And we leave curbing off on that side, so it just flows across the grass at that point. So the grass that's in that area becomes a bio-swell. It helps to treat the whatever runoff from that little parking lot. We might have, you know, any kind of sand or anything like that gets caught, troopers into the storm drain. And then we light and stripe it for parking. And at the end of the day, we have a useful parking area for somebody other than Bill's crew when they go hang out their annual Christmas holiday sites, which are the only people I've seen it used by. So, and I'm not supposed to say they don't use it during park events and things when I'm not here, but anyway, that's where Ben usually parks his truck. So does that answer your question?
Yes, yeah, thanks, Chris. Appreciate it.
Councilor Boudreaux.
Yeah, Chris, I have two questions. Maybe I missed it. I don't know. When this all started, there was all this talk about the realignment of Garfield Street. And is that in here? Where is that?
I decided when I picked this project up that any type of realignment of Garfield Street was going to cause more trouble than it was worth. I'm either going to cut into that embankment into the park and have to deal with taking land from the park. I'm going to either curb it the other way into our front yard of the Town Hall. It just looked like that it was a... No matter what I did there, it was going to be a negative impact and not a positive one. Now, when you add to that that curve, also is a traffic calming device. It slows people down. To straighten that out, it seemed to be another reason not to do it. So keep the curve, keep the traffic speed slow, especially coming into our... Because basically, we have four crosswalks coming through there when this is done. Two are over by the bus garage, and the other two are at Town Hall. And so anything we can do to keep traffic to, you know, our 25 mile an hour speed limit through there would be a plus. So I chose not to realign the road.
Not a good problem for me. One more question. I'm always nervous when any kind of construction or whatever goes on around there because of the falls. I'm always worried that either, I don't know, there's digging or any kind of explosives or whatever. digging or any kind of um explosives or whatever to do construction. I mean, this is not gonna impact the falls or the mill pond um under structure, is it?
Um no, and another benefit to not realigning the road is that any kind of excavation is minimized. So because the road itself is only gonna be milled, there'll be no major grade changes to the road. Uh the only grading that's going on is in the town hall parking lot, and that's minimal. It's within six or eight inches of its current location. And again, it's changing that shape of the parking lots so that they pitch towards catch basins that are already there. So we're not excavating for new catch basins there. Uh the other parking lot we just talked about uh is just a minor, again, changing the slope of that so it pitches towards the catch basin instead of being kind of this odd uh when it was a road, it was crowned like a road would be. So the one side tends to pitch to the uh the south where there's nothing for the water to do except run out into the road at the far end of the, where the apron is, the driveway. Uh so the gratings are minimal. There'll be no need for demolitions. We're using explosives or, you know, heavy equipment for that. We are doing a little bit of, heavy, put it this way, the real heavy excavation is gonna be the replacement of the existing catch basin with the hydrogram separator. So that's at the north end of the bus parking lot. So you have to excavate out that structure that's there and then put the new one in. And the new one's a little bigger, so there is some material that will come out of there, but that's the the largest excavation in the project. Um along that lines is we do have some catch basin replacement on the Garfield uh street area closer to Main where we have existing structures that are deteriorated. So they're either gonna be replaced if they're the old handmade cinder block style. Because what you don't wanna do is, you know, five or ten years into a new road, come back and replace catch basins. You wanna do it before you pave. And that excavation will be pretty small because you're gonna replace it with structures of the same size. So it's a matter of making enough room to get the thing out, popping in the new one, backfilling it after the pipe's connected, and then, you know, preparing it for for pavement.
As long as that's always, you know, first in your mind when you think about that. And I do, I know how much you uh you were concerned and 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 did a good job on the replacement of the bridge by not disturbing too much in the fall. So thank you for that and keep that in top of your mind.
Lasting would be bad over there. I'm not too sure how sound that rock is, and that's one of my two town dams, so uh I do think about that thing a fair more than I should, to be honest with you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman.
Uh just a couple of questions. Um this water quality structure is is to treat any runoff from from the buses that oil leaks or gas leaks.
Sure, so the the catchment area for that drainage system will now become Garfield and the new paved uh bus lot. They'll be graded towards that line of catch basin, so everything on both sides will flow towards that. It picked up by one of the three catch basins with the last one in the line treating the water as it goes through. So it'll work as um any petroleum product is lighter than water, so it floats. Any uh heavy debris like, say, Styrofoam cups uh also floats, that gets caught in a basket, so it's easier to remove. And heavier sediment like sand would settle to the bottom and have to be vacuumed out on a probably an annual basis from what I see of that area.
So we have to maintain it periodically?
Yes, but we have others, so it wouldn't be the only one we're doing.
And oil and and gaskets?
When you do the uh removal of the sand at the bottom, they start with the with the top. They just basically, it's a vacuum truck, so it just vacuums up the top of the water. Off goes the oil and grease. It never gets to the point where it can get out through the outlet because the way these things are designed uh it's it's like a septic tank in that it's uh the water level is maintained at a certain point, and then the overflow goes out through the pipe.
Um and thi- this runs from Main Street all the way to Willard, right?
Or the Garfield Mill and Overlay. And then when it's done, it'll be painted in a way that provides bike lanes on both sides.
Is there any thought of of fixing up the the side, the divided between the sidewalk and the building formerly known as OFI?
You mean moving the sidewalk?
Well, th- there's a sidewalk there, and then there's a little garden kind of thing there. Any idea of making that look nicer, because now we own that property and?
I I think I can work with Mr. D'Amelio to make the property look a little nicer.
Only because all of our other properties look 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 nice, and now that it's our property?
It's a valid point, but frankly, the only thing I've noticed so far is we have a fire hydrant in the middle of the sidewalk.
That would not be a good thing, yeah.
We're moving that. Uh MDC's already got it marked out. Uh we had to ask nicely what they do it for us. Nobody believes me when I tell them it's in the middle of the walk.
Yeah, it would be a bad place for it. Fire hydrants are good, but not in the middle of the sidewalk.
Well, we we plow snow with a truck, so you can see we're having a steel structure in the sidewalk is not good for the truck.
Or even walking. Not many people in extravagance have smacked their knees on and they're just not walking.
Frankly, can't believe I haven't had complaints about it.
But I think that that little that little median, that little strip there, that's that's on that between the 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 road, the sidewalk, and then and then the building would be nice to, because now it's our property and we should probably put some.
Bill's nodding yes.
Definitely end up putting flowers or some kind of, making it look better. And the timeline for this, when when do we plan on starting this?
Uh roughly early August. Now, I'm I'm at the whim of Tilcon, who is our primary contractor on this. But we already had them scheduled for the milling in August and the pavement in September, so we're still on schedule for that. Uh I met with them, I think it was yesterday morning, to confirm the additional work. They're gonna be throwing me a a price quote soon. Hopefully by the end of the week, and that will also include their availability. Because now that it's not just a mill and overlay, now it's just some drainage work and some other little bits, and and they have different crews for this, so it's they'll get back to me with, these guys are available this week, and those guys, you know, that kind of thing, stuff I don't usually bother you with.
Thank you.
Councilwoman.
Thanks, Mayor. And thank you so much for all your skill and your knowledge uh that you bring to all these tasks. Um it's a lot more complex than I know. I appreciate it until you start to describe all the parts, moving parts. Um just one question. Uh you mentioned the town hall parking lot. Is that a repair or a complete redo, or what what's the status of that? What do you need to do? And that's my only question.
So because we're regrading it, most of the asphalt that's there now, as you see it, will be removed. Uh it's what we we call a peel. Uh you come in with a machine that has a like a bucket on it and just drop it those. And then they regrade the existing subbase, uh roll it, prepare it for pavement, and then they pave it. It's a pretty easy process.
Okay.
Uh and again, the point of it is to change the grades a little bit to to improve the way runoff comes off of the asphalt now.
All right, and just maybe I should have said two questions, but as part of that, I know in the past, and we've all talked about parking ad nauseam because it's an important topic and many times there's not enough. Is there any opportunity to uh make any other cuts to create one or two or four more spots in that existing stamp, or is that maxed out?
It would be a challenge uh to put another spot in. And in fact, we actually may lose one because the EV stations require a handicap spot.
Okay.
So we're gonna narrow up that island next to it a little bit on the north side to provide the extra space for the handicap spot.
Okay, cool.
Uh but I did not see any opportunity to add another space.
All right.
I know we've had requests for that.
Wishful thinking.
Uh we have an awful lot packed into this little space here.
Yep. All right, thank you.
Councilor Nagel.
Thank you, and thank you for presenting clearly this project and clearing up some questions I might have had. Thank you especially for keeping the curve in Garfield. It's been a pet peeve of mine. It's come up over several different uh councils, and I'm glad you've made that decision for the reasons that you have, which happen to be the mainly the reasons that I had for it not being changed. Uh I also appreciate that you explained tonight that indeed uh the entire length, if I understand correctly, of Garfield is gonna be paved at one time, and that includes additional sidewalks on one side or another from one end to the other.
Some of the sidewalks are gonna be pay painted sidewalks on the new asphalt. Uh when we laid out where the bus, uh the limits of the bus pavement was gonna go, because we're pulling we're pulling the back of the bus parking lot closer to Garfield. Right now, they're kind of spread out. If we're gonna pave it, we don't pave any more than we need to because that's good money after bad, so to speak. So when we were laying this out here, your bus parking spaces, et cetera, et cetera, we provided room in the front to provide for the bike lanes and then a uh a gap and then the parking, I mean, excuse me, the pedestrian access to the sidewalk. So it's a it's a sidewalk in name because it's painted on the asphalt, but it will be a delineated space. It'll be laid out for that purpose. And this goes in the area of that whole large expanse of asphalt down there. We're putting a concrete walk or something like that in would have been let's just say that would have been more challenging to do than paint. Uh for a contractor, for us to maintain for a lot of reasons. Uh so they, again, the decision was made to do where we, where the new walks are going in the park are all by two minutes. Easier for us to maintain with the staff we have and the tools we have. And we're making them five feet wide so we can pile them with a truck instead of having to hand shovel them. So I think the current terminology for a walk like that is now a multi-use trail. But it does the same thing. It gets people from place to place.
Is this going to affect in any way uh the configuration of the buses and how they are parked?
Yes, to their improvement. We've worked closely with the Board of Ed personnel on how they want their buses laid out, how big they are, how many of them they have that are large, how many they have that are small, and all that sort of thing. So it's all been accommodated for.
And that was another concern of mine for many years about terrible things, or almost terrible things, were happening in terms of buses going into Garfield and the public driving. Uh and um I'm happy at least to hear that that the change is gonna be one that's going to be um less safety for what happens there. Uh because I knew trees were going to come up at tonight's meeting. I looked to see what trees were marked, and one of them I noticed uh wasn't marked. Is it all I believe the four trees along the line and maybe one of the uh paper things that was put on the tree just tapping to fall off?
If I remember off the top of my head, there are five white pines.
Yeah, I noticed all except for one.
There is a large oak on the west end of that stand that is remaining.
Okay.
Uh the oak is not involved in our utilities, and um frankly, it it's the the will of God that it survives, I guess. I'm not taking it down.
That's that's good to hear. And going back to the other end of the the project itself, the library, does the renovation and improvements to the town lot there going to affect the existing library parking lot that's there at the moment?
No, our uh construction limit is there, i- if you were to walk down that connecting pathway between the two lots, you can see a change in color. I don't know exactly why the library parking lot is a lighter color than the rest, because that doesn't quite I know how asphalt will oxidize over time and change color to lighten up, but that particular asphalt is an entirely different color than I expected to see. But the positive side of that is, at the end of that pavement, it's a clear line where we're gonna mark it up to. We can, we're just gonna cut right across there, and that's where we're gonna stop.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilor Gonzalez.
Thank you very much for this presentation. Um it sounds like you have thought this over a lot and um the pros and the cons of things. And it sounds like it's gonna be um pretty, but more importantly, that we're gonna have some improved safety features. And I think we've heard that a lot from from the community, and we want the safety stuff. Um I know Councilor Minkie asked when it was gonna begin, how long will this take before you think everything is completed?
Obviously weather dependent, uh but if everything goes well, it's only something like a six to eight week project.
Okay.
So and we're waiting until all the big park events are done. So we've got a lot going on in Bill's Park.
There always is.
Always is, so that's why the August timeframe.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thanks. Um Chris, thanks for the, this is very comprehensive and um you know, echo what Councilor Gonzalez said. It sounds as though there have been many, many discussions with all entities involved, and it sounds like you've come up with with a real solid plan for this. Um a couple of questions. Uh when, and you may have mentioned this early in your discussion, uh when will the trees come down?
They're posted now, uh as you're probably aware. Uh now, I guess the question comes up for uh where that goes next. So I'm no expert on pre-law, uh but I understand that the two of the five are in the park, and there's a potential that uh appeal can be made to the Parks Commission to have the uh town's tree warden uh meet with them to discuss those two trees. Uh there's the, they're unfortunately the two that are mostly the most impacted by the new walkway. Uh and again, that that walkway was reconfigured several times and at the end of the day, the one that gives us the best grade, which is really what a walk has to do runs along the side of those uh without going too far out into the park. I mean, you could make the claim, well, you go fifty yards out into the park and take a a right, and you don't hit the trees at all. Uh and that would give me plenty of grade, but it's also well into the two into the park, you know, so to try and keep the the walkways close to the road and out of the other areas that are used for other functions. This is kind of the the best path we could come up with. Give us the grade we need, and that's, you know, those two trees that are in the park, and they're only in the park by less than a foot in terms of the way we measure trees for this sort of thing. The other three are in the town right away. So it becomes one of those things where it's like, well, okay, the ones that we most need to take down are the ones that would be subject to any kind of a hearing if the Parks Board chose to have one.
And and yeah, and and Bill, you, Bill's uh the expert on on the what the the responsibilities of the hearings and special meetings for the Park Commission. And I think the plan was was to proceed with a hearing slash special meeting, um you know, sooner rather than later, so that these Tuesday, so that these things can get, you know, formally resolved.
The the replanting, uh will there be time to replant now, or will we see that replanting in the spring?
Well, it's not a time-sensitive matter. If we have growing season left at the end of the project, um depending, again, with with the weather.
Yeah.
Uh I don't see any reason why we can't plant them this year. Uh but if we get to the point where it's a diminishing return, you know, as you get into the November timeframe, uh we can wait till next year.
Yeah.
Because most of this is CIP funded, the trees are CIP funded, so they're not tied to any other timeline other than what's best for the for the tree itself.
I'm I'm just curious and maybe asking questions that other people residents may ask.
I I appreciate that, and and I'm glad you bring it out because I would rather it be brought out in a public forum and discussed than what we currently have, which is opinions formed on opinion as opposed to opinions formed on fact. Uh I don't have any trouble with people calling me in the office. I get routine emails from, you know, some of our regular residents. Paul Dixon, myself, you know, Rob Hillman, we don't mind talking to people if they have an issue.
Well, the fact that, you know, you've chosen the dogwoods and dogwood and magnolia, I'm looking forward to those.
I am too.
I think it's 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 really, it really will enhance that area. Um two more quick questions. The length of the bike lane, is that gonna go from bike lanes from Main all the way through to Willard?
Yes, now with a caveat. When you get to the Willard end, the pavement gets a little narrow, and so they go from being dedicated bike lanes to being shared space. And at the Main Street end, I think it's the same situation, but that area between, say, Walsh and the parking area at the end of um Garfield on the Willard end, which is where it tapers down.
Yeah.
That whole stretch is dedicated bike lane on both sides.
One final question. So far, um the um be adjacent to and maybe behind where the buses are parked now, is that wetland area? It's 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 a it's a, I'm just, it's a conservation area. So I'm thinking with everything that you've said about the the new drainage system, that that will actually create a safer habitat or may a more ecologically sound habitat for that.
So normally, when I get a question like this, I would invite you to next week's meeting, but you're coming anyway. So yes, I'm in front of conservation with this project next Tuesday.
Okay. Okay.
So there is wetland and some flood zone alongside the brook. Obviously, it's a brook, it's going to have a flood zone. And that wetland area does wrap around the back of that berm behind the bus parking area. And the upwind review area does overlap into the current parking lot. So one of the things we were looking at was an eye towards pulling as much of the parking out, any, any additional area of the parking lot being pulled back closer to Garfield. So any excess and then removing that excess gravel and replanting that with lawn.
Okay.
So that comes up next week.
Between that and the new drainage system, I'm pleased to hear that it's even, even greater protection. So thank you so much. This is really well considered and detailed, so thanks.
Long time coming.
Councilor Jacob wants one.
Sorry, just when people were talking about parking, just two questions. With the bike lanes and some of the sidewalks being on the, painted on the asphalt, I really don't know if on-street parking is technically allowed or not, but there is on-street parking particularly towards the, towards Main Street. Is this going to eliminate all on-street parking now?
It would, yes.
And, okay, the whole Garfield will no longer have?
Well, I wouldn't say all of it. There is that stretch from, let's say, Audubon to the commercial buildings there where there are homes. There'll be a bike lane there, but as far as prohibiting them from parking on the street, at that point, I guess I would have to have a chat with Lieutenant Dean and see if there's, you know, if that's a conflict and if that's a point of law under the local traffic authorities' jurisdiction. We're going to provide the bike lane, the parking on the street thing will have to be a behavior modification.
Right, I would imagine, I mean, you don't want cars in the park in a bike lane.
Correct.
And then also that little triangle overgrown parking lot at the end of, you know, Garfield and Willard, as much as I like what you said, it was going to be transformed into some kind of grass or whatever. But given the situation that we have in parking, how many cars would be able to be there if you, if you paved it for overfull parking? Because, you know, you've got the soccer field within walking distance, you've got, you know, a lot of Bill's events going on, you have, I mean, there are times here when I can't get a parking lot, a parking space, I have to go park by the bus garage. Would we be able to gain a significant amount, I mean, of parking? We did that, was that considered?
What we considered was maximizing the space we have there for additional parking, but by actually striping it and paving it so that it's not, you know, a hazard to walk around. We think that we're going to see some people use it where nobody uses it now. And I want to say we provide 12 spaces there, but that figure is subject to my sometimes faulty memory. I'd like to say I remember everything clearly, but I do get overwhelmed at times with what goes in doesn't always come out right. So I want to say it's 12 spaces, but I would verify that in the morning if you're interested in the number.
So I guess I thought that you were going to be, you said something off making it not, maybe I got confused, but that will be available for parking?
Yes, it will be available for parking.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, the other alternative was to remove it altogether, but I see a value in having it.
Exactly, 12 cars is 12 cars.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming out, Chris, and you're thorough in clarifying a presentation. I know we've been, we've talked about this connectivity grant for a little while, so I'm excited to see it come to this table and see what gets done here. So appreciate all your efforts coming in and look forward to seeing how it goes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Wrap up presentations, we were moving along to public participation in general. If you'd like to speak in public participation, please step up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. If you are on Zoom, please use the raise hand function. We will alternate between in the room and over Zoom.
Almost right. In the room and over Zoom.
Yeah, well, I think it does run technically.
He's supporting, he doesn't.
Yep.
Hello, Dana Havens, 113 Stoddard Avenue. Mr. Zibido began his presentation saying the grant's original purpose or purpose was to connect to Market Square to Mill Pond Park. So I'm wondering why, since we already have a sidewalk on the north side of Garfield and all the parking lots are on the north side of Garfield, why then do we need to put sidewalks and dig into parkland on the south side of Garfield? I mean, how many people are going to use that sidewalk to walk down to where the bus garage? So I'm just thinking, maybe you can nix that sidewalk altogether and just use the bike lanes. And when they first started talking about this grant and I was first getting involved in town politics, they were talking about using it to enhance, well, the connectivity from Market Square to Garfield and to continue the fancy looking sidewalks that they have in the center of town down Garfield to help encourage people to keep on walking down Garfield to visit the businesses and frequent the businesses that are there, like the little shop, the chiropractor, and now Karma's Closet's there, OFI is gone, it's going to be us, but it will also be easier for people to access from the center of town to the new town hall annex or whatever it's going to be called. So I'm just curious as to why this, there seems, why people feel there's a need for a sidewalk on the south side of the park because it really goes nowhere but the bus garage. And if you wanted to, you know, go see the falls, you're going to park down by the falls or park up by the tennis courts and take the pretty walk down the, you know, down the steps. So I don't think, I mean, I would like to see that nice sidewalk be continued down into the town hall rather than have a concrete sidewalk in our park. And then maybe you don't have to cut down the trees that already has a ton of people signing their online petition. And if you do have to cut down the trees, please don't do it until after the heat of summer because when you're there at the park for activities, that's like one of the only places you can go for shade. So, and I don't like heat, so please keep those up as long as possible. And that's it for me.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Do you have one on Zoom? We will go over to that person. Phone number ending in 802, you are up.
Hi, Rose Lyons, 46 Alton Drive. First, I'd like to thank Chris for his presentation. I've been waiting for it for seven years now and this looks like it might be it with or without the trees being down. I'm not quite sure which way that's going to go, but I hadn't even thought about the realignment question of Garfield. I thought that was gone a long time ago, so I was surprised when Counselor Budrako brought it up. I have been around long enough to see $450,000 allocated and CIP for the realignment be transferred to the Myra Cohen Way, be transferred somewhere else. And I'm glad it's dead in its tracks right. I know there's a lot of discussion on Facebook and I'm hoping some people will show up tonight and I also look forward to hearing them at the public hearing. But just a suggestion, it seems that anything that happens in the park, especially when you put a sign on a tree, draws attention. Is there any way you can have a public information meeting prior to putting those signs up? Because it seems like they're not going to come down right next week or two weeks from now. So why get everybody all anxious without giving them more information than putting a sign on the tree? I suggested to James that maybe if there's something important like a public hearing that you want people to show up at, put it on the tree because as soon as the sign goes on the tree, that's when people are looking. But it's not a bad thing, it's a good thing, but I just hope that they show up and voice their concerns. As far as the fire hydrant on Garfield Street, Chris, I'm not surprised. The same thing happened on Market Square after the project was done. They put thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars in and had to move the fire hydrant. Since this project isn't going forward until August, I do hope that there are plans in place to safely cross the children on Garfield Street. I experienced it twice last year and I heard other people experienced it, not only on Garfield Street, but on Main Street as well. Our children are crossing that street and I've watched a staff, doesn't even have a paddle that says stop, and people don't pay attention on Garfield. I don't care whether it's near the police station or the town hall, people don't pay attention anywhere these days. So hopefully something's in place. And I have to, sorry, Chris, but I have to cast my vote against the Magnolia. They're beautiful for about two weeks and then it's a mess all over the yard, all over the streets and it's slippery. Anyway, that's it, thank you very much.
Thank you, Rose. Thank you, Ms. Lyons.
Good afternoon, Town Consulars, Mary Trister, Town Manager, Roshan. My name is Stanley Sobieski, reside 26 Deepwater Drive, Newington. Been here for 77 years. Garfield Street definitely needs to be fixed and by taking, by not taking a curve out, you're actually slowing traffic. If you took that curve out, it's like driving on a straightaway like Robbins Avenue, all right? What happens is it's a fallacy that's been proven in traffic engineering for years. Straight, wide road, people don't pay attention to speed. Curving roads, narrow roads, they do, they slow down. With regard to this plan, I think it's great. Chris has done an outstanding job. And as what Ms. Lyons referred to, I actually saw, I was coming into the town hall to sign some plans and they were crossing kids and late, the girl was crossing, had a white blouse on with a yellow paddle. I did call Bill and asked him to get ahold of Lieutenant Ryan Dean and get the red stop paddles they use at the crossing, as crossing guards on Main Street. The red will stand out, it's not going to get washed away. Because I would not want to be the person, have to go home and tell somebody that your son or daughter got hit by a car. And this is definitely going to help slow the traffic down. And I think it's a great plan. And as far as the pines go, those pines were here when I was a kid, that was a long time ago. The white pine are pretty close to the end of their lifespan. If you look at them, they're pretty well devastated in certain areas. White pines are notoriously shallow rooted trees. Every time we have a major storm up here, heavy rainstorm, heavy winds, they fall over. CL and, I mean, EverSource has been taking them down for years near the power lines. There's a whole bunch that went down on Connecticut Avenue they took down. So it's a, it's a tree that's not conducive to near power lines or public places because they do snap and fall. That's pretty much about it. And again, I vote for this plan. It's a long time in coming and both Chris and I know Paul has some work on it. It's a great plan and I really hope the town council moves forward. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
So, yes. Anyone else want to come on up?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Town Council, Town Manager. I just want to make sure I understand the process on, oh, I'm sorry, I always see that and I apologize. I've been on that site too long. 36 Baldwin Court, Newington, Connecticut. I'm sure that's correct. Better be, right? I have a copy of the public notice that the tree warden posted and a number of people who jogged through Mill Pond, and I do it myself, have a certain sensitivity to the park and they have a special sensitivity given the recent project that didn't go forward for whatever reason, that people didn't want it. Now, in this notice, he says that, he states the statute and he indicates in this notice that if one, if a person, a firm or a corporation opposes the removal of the trees, he should be getting that information in a timely fashion and then he will set up a public hearing chaired by him. Now, I don't know if that's correct or not, but that's what's going on now. I agree with the comments that were made by one of the people about if there's some way that these things can be handled in advance of the public notice because he's required under statute to post these once. Now, there are reasons that he checks off or could check off for, for the removal of these trees, none of which match with the presentation of the good engineer, other than he lists construction. He doesn't say they're diseased, he doesn't say they're, they're an obstruction. EverSource hasn't had a problem with them. They validated that today. I mean, it's up to you, they haven't had any cost, branches from them. For trees that are nearly 400 years old, boy, they're standing tall. But the thing is building a life of its own. There are 250 people now that have signed a petition. And I think it, I don't know who most of them are, but the few that I know that are in the leadership role of us are reasonable people, but the word construction, they just didn't understand it and couldn't clarification on it unless they reached out to you guys individually. But there's a, there's a gap in the opinion of the value of those trees in terms of their health. And I'm not being critical of anybody's opinion on this, I'm just saying they want to hear from the tree warden, what his estimation is and then what's going to replace them and why they have to go down. You know, it's the old song, you tear down the, you tear down the park and you put up a parking lot. Well, I told them that's not happening, they're not going to intrude into the park with different things and I didn't know anything about it frankly, but the thing is really building its own energy and the sooner that they, that whoever the town manager says it's appropriate to create this public hearing, whether it's a tree warden or whoever it is, he thinks he is, then that would be helpful, I think, the information. They're just looking for information, not a fight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks.
Really? He was working second again. I saw it, oh, poor. Okay.
We all know why I'm here. I'd like to start by addressing comments made by council members at the last meeting. You say you hear me, but you're not listening. It's about volume and hours, not speed. I believe someone said, what's the difference with traffic on a turnpike or Kits Lane? Well, one is a state highway, the other a residential neighborhood. As for not being a transportation engineer, you don't have to be an engineer, just need a little common sense and compassion for the residents of Kits Lane. If the town does not care about the residents of Kits Lane, just say so. But doing nothing is not an action, it's just doing nothing. The council seems to be more concerned with the riders that do not live in Newington than the residents that do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the room or over Zoom that would like to speak in public participation? All right, seeing none. I know we had a bunch of emails, but I don't think anything came in prior to today. Yeah. We did get a number of emails from folks about the trees, but nothing for the record. All righty. So we will move on to remarks by Consulars on public participation. Any comments from council? Councilor Jacob.
I'm just wondering, Jonathan, if you're going to address anything from the DOT on Kits Lane during your report?
Yeah, I'm happy to engage. Now, I wasn't planning to, I mean, in response, it's clear what we're talking about. The DOT, that their May 20th review session, they did discuss Mr. Wa's concerns and they dismissed them or found them, I'm not sure exactly what verb they used, but they, they're not recommending any changes to the, to the route for various reasons, including accessibility, danger to pedestrians and increase in foot traffic along Kits Lane as a result of people who just.
of people would just be, if they had, they got off on Robbins, they would have to walk down Kits Lane, so you'd have an significant increase in pedestrian traffic. So you'd have, you know, and then it would also add to the, the travel time for, for, for the bus as well. So there was a whole host of five reasons why they recommended against any changes. Based on that, I'm not sure what reason as manager I would do to recommend that, that we appeal to them to you know, reevaluate their, their, their decision. But if that's the will of council, then I'm, I will do, I'll do what you say.
I'm just, uh, I don't know. I, I was trying to read some of the background of this and I apologize, I just had it briefly. And I know that, what's her name, the woman from DOT.
Yeah, Priscilla.
Priscilla did respond, but I guess. You know, there's not a lot of residents, it's not like on Camp Avenue where people come out and whatever, but there's, I don't know, ten, fifteen houses on Kits Lane. And then from one of the the correspondence I read, there's like twenty people that get on and off the bus.
Yeah, there's two, there's two stops, you know, on Kits Lane, I think, and yeah, about twenty or something like that.
So, you know, twenty people running the bus versus twenty people living on Kits Avenue, you know, Kits Lane.
So, I mean, but, but, but yeah, that's just the thing is, is what DOT found was there, if you, first of all, the, the stop on Robbins isn't ADA accessible. It would, but if, if that was, if, if it was just, if that southbound one twenty-five was routed to the Berlin Turnpike down. It would cause people to get off at, on Robbins and then walk down Kits Lane. So one of the concerns that Mr. Waugh had was about loitering and pedestrian traffic. And this would actually increase the problem, increase that foot traffic.
Well, it would increase the foot traffic, but by having a bus, it's increasing vehicle traffic. So, I mean, it's, it's I, I don't, I don't see that as a valid reason for change, but I mean, I'm not, I don't want to get in argument with you, okay, but I do feel that I, I just don't, haven't gotten a good understanding as to why the decision was made to go down Kits Lane in terms of, you know, what's, what safety issues were, what, what kind of evaluation. I would be, I would be very angry if a city bus started coming down my street and nobody told me about it. I mean, I would, um. I just, I don't know what the old, I just feel that I don't have enough information and I appeal for the residents of Kits Lane and I don't think it's just Mr. Waugh. I mean, I don't know, maybe he's speaking for himself, maybe, I don't know whether you've talked to other residents, but why it was changed and who, was there an outreach beforehand? And then I, I also got an email from somebody that said they saw the bus coming down Rocket Lane. That's not, I mean, how does that?
I don't, I have no, I have no idea. I have no knowledge of that. So, I mean, all, all I'm saying is, is all, again, you know, my job is to implement the will of town council. If council passes a resolution saying that, or directs me one way or another to reach out to DOT and ask for a reevaluation of this or to somehow put pressure on this, on them to do that, I, I will do that, that's my job. But I'm saying, what I'm providing to you guys is information from DOT saying that was not their recommendation to do, to, to change the route. So, I, I, I'm just merely relaying the information from DOT to council. Tell me what to do.
I, I don't know. I don't know whether we need a resolution. I don't really know how anybody else feels, I really don't, but I just don't. I, I, as a resident or, you know, as responding to the Kits Lane people, I just want to, just tell us why. I, I, I just don't get a feeling that we know why it was done, why it's so.
So, so, okay, so, so it was to increase, to increase like, because going down to all the way to the Berlin Turnpike would. So first of all, you, it's not an ADA, the Robbins, Robbins bus stop near Kits Lane is not ADA accessible. If you go all the way to the Berlin Turnpike, that substantially slows down the, the speed of the route. The, if you were to use that Robbins stop as a, a place to, for people to get off, it would cause everybody to, to, to walk down Kits Lane. Because the alternative of, of drive, of walking across the Berlin Turnpike would put, put those pedestrians at risk. So there was a host of things about pedestrian safety and distance that they have to walk, accessibility slash ADA. As well as the speed of the lines that collectively fed into DOT's recommendation that the one twenty-five southbound go down Kits Lane.
I'm just saying, they're still crossing the Berlin Turnpike. I don't get that. I don't get that excuse at all.
Okay.
And the accessibility, the fact that they have to, they're, they're still walking from Kits Lane, whether it's on the corner of Robbins and Kits or on Kits Lane, they're still walking. Someplace. Berlin Turnpike is a major vehicle road. It's got, you know, that the businesses are there. Actually, it would be closer for the, I, I, again, I'm, I'm not going to push you or push anybody to do anything, but I just don't feel that Mr. Waugh. Well, I don't know what the context of his conversations were with Priscilla, but from what I've read, I can understand why there are questions. That's all I'm saying. And I wouldn't mind, you know, writing up some questions. Not, it's a formal resolution for you to have to go pursue, but maybe, I mean, I'll write them.
Yeah, no, so again, if council wants me to follow up with, with DOT, I'm happy to do that. I have a nice relationship with them. I'm happy to do that and I'm happy to continue to serve as intermediary on this. But all I, all I'm doing is just simply relaying the information from DOT. I'm not putting a spin on it. I, I, again, it's, it's council's prerogative to, to make objections to DOT, so as simple as that.
I, I think I'll jump in. I think, I, I, I think it would be beneficial if we could at least get some questions answered from the council perspective.
Okay, sure.
And I think if, if you would do that, that would.
Yeah, absolutely.
So we can get the, if you want to write them.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll give you a call.
Yeah, we can figure that out. Yeah, for sure. Because I mean, like I said, like you said, we're not. It's not that, it's not at the town's purview to regulate transit in the state, but this is affecting our residents, so we should, we deserve to get some answers.
Absolutely.
So I think we should get some answers to our questions, for sure. Agree. Uh, Councilor Gonzalez.
I just wanted to respond, Mr. Waugh, is that correct? Yes, I, I just wanted to respond to you. I hear you and I know that others do hear you and, and I'm sorry that you think that we don't. Has Mr. Waugh been aware that you have been, you know, speaking with DOT and, and, yeah? Okay, so they are trying to do something. You're not being ignored. I just, I just want you to know that. That's all.
Thank you, Councilor.
Deputy Mayorada.
Yes. I agree with Councilor Jacob that we have questions that still haven't been answered. And that's not to say that, Jonathan, you haven't been doing your due diligence. Sometimes we know it's difficult to get their, get responses from the state or to get them.
No, I mean, they've been very forthcoming, like they've been very forthcoming. They have been consistently have acknowledged this as a concern. They've had multiple meetings about it. They, they, they drafted a very articulate and reasoned reason for their denial of the, of the request. Again, I'm happy to follow up. Again, I'm not a hundred percent sure other than that there is a bus that's going down Kits Lane, that, that seems to be the, the heart of the issue. So beyond that, I, I, I'm struggling to understand this as a policy issue.
And, and what the actual reason why I raised my hand.
Yeah.
Even though I what I, what I've said a minute ago is I'd like to see, and I don't see why we couldn't, if we take it for ourselves, I'd like to do a ride along and see and take a look at that route from beginning, you know, as it comes up through the Berlin Turnpike and then comes back down through Kits Lane, just, just so that I, I can visualize it and I can be there and see what's going on in terms of sound, in terms of, of any noise. In terms of, you know, the volume of, of ridership, I'd be happy to do that as well.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I just have one thing, I just wanted to clarify, because I know you mentioned it during the presentation and I'm sorry, Mr. Harpy left already, but it would have been good for you. I just wanted to clarify that there will be a public hearing.
Yeah, so in response to, and, and Bill can explain it better than I can, but basically in response to the petition, that triggers the, the hearing. So it's a, it's, it's a, it's a hearing for the two trees or three trees in the right of way in front of the, the tree warden. Where the, the two trees that are on the, in, in park, outside the right of way in the park. That becomes a special meeting for the park commissioners to take up. So that will happen, you're saying, on Tuesday?
There's an opportunity because of the timing.
Yeah.
Regular monthly meeting on Tuesday.
Yeah.
So I thought we could combine both the, the statute hearing of trees.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And the park commission of trees. Everything could be.
It, it makes sense to take to kill it with two bricks and one stone.
Councilor Mankin.
I would just recommend if that's, if that's the plan, Bill, that you, you have the meeting somewhere other than your, your office or your conference room. Because it.
You don't want an expansion.
It, it might get kind of busy in there.
Let's, let's do it, let's hold it in, 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 in council chambers if it's.
And that'd be really well publicized.
Yeah, yeah, let's, let's, let's.
The worst thing is sort of try to have a public hearing and have everybody know where that hearing is and then they, they get the feeling they don't know where it is and they can't come.
We need to accommodate a large.
Deputy Mayorada.
Yeah, just as a point of information. Unless they change, unless they cancel it, there will be a conservation commission meeting at seven here in council chambers. So I don't know what time.
Yeah, we could do it at six. We have, yeah.
Yeah, I just.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll make sure that the rooms are.
Okay. Properly.
Or we could use the multi-perfusion that's available, I'm not sure.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to, you know, let people know.
Any other remarks by councilors on public participation? Seeing none. Alright, we will move on to agenda item seven, consideration of old business.
First, on this tax incentive policy, I think yet again, we are not quite ready to vote on that. Still have a few more questions and a few more things we wanted to look at, so I'm just going to leave that on the agenda.
Councilor Mankin, it's the point of, I'm not sure what, we're ready, what, what are we waiting for?
Our caucus has questions, so.
Okay, what questions?
We're discussing them internally. We're still, we're not, we're not done with our discussions.
Can you share with the rest of us or?
I'll be sure. I have a question. So I, one question I had, I'll just raise my hand to make it official. One question I had in particular is that obviously we, as a part of this tax incentive policy are discussing potential abatements for residential housing. And I was interested to maybe have some discussion about how those kind of incentives might apply to housing with affordable units.
Well, I, I can't speak to abatements for, you mean for single family?
No, for multi, for.
For multifamily, yeah, 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 yeah. So I'm sorry, Matt.
I was just interested to know what the council's authority was in, in a policy like this to specify certain directives around when they would provide those incentives for this kind of housing versus this kind of housing. Affordable housing versus.
Yeah, I, I think it's, I think it's, I, I'm, I'm sorry, are you saying like under what state authority or you're saying?
Just what legal authority the, the council has to, to, to specify, you know, the.
Well, you're, you're, you're creating a, 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 I mean, Danielle, feel free to jump in here, but you're, you're creating a framework for how the types of requests would be evaluated so that there's consistency.
Yep. So is there, in a policy like this, is, is it appropriate or is it just the council have the kind of legal authority in a policy like this to specify a preference for abatements for those that include a large percentage, for example?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, absolutely. So if you're, I mean, that's the whole intent, the intention behind it would be for, for there to be, you know, using your authority to encourage the types of development that achieve your public policy goals.
Statutorily, it's, it's a little, the statute twelve dash sixty-five B is, is actually fairly specific.
Okay.
As to what we can include in our, I mean, I'll say. By way of residential properties, it has to be a, or property has to consist of four or more dwelling units for residential.
Four or more.
Yep.
But, but, but it's just that, I mean, Matt, if, 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 if you have a developer that has a vision of an affordable housing development, I mean, again, we're talking multifamily, obviously, you know, larger than four. You know, I think what, we're, we're all kind of envisioning the same thing. But that, that, that has a vision for affordable housing that meets our goals as a community. And for it to be financially viable. Need requiring tax fixing agreements in order to make it financially viable. That's perfectly aligned with, with the purpose of this.
And the council isn't precluded from adopting policies that specify those kinds of developments. Just as a general.
I have copies in the statute.
Yeah, I mean, does it, does it, I'm not speaking out of school, am I, Dan, Danielle?
No, I mean, it's, it's the, so it's office use, retail use, permanent residential use and in connection with a residential property consisting of four or more dwelling units. Transient residential use in connection with a residential property, oh, I've read that. Manufacturing use, warehouse, storage or distribution use. Structured, multi-level parking in connection with mass, mass transit, information technology, recreation facilities, transportation facilities and mixed use development. And then the last one is used by or on behalf of a health system.
So, I mean, and, you know, in other ways, whether it's affordable housing, whether it's improving historically blighted communities, you know, encouraging, you know, types of you know, retail developments that otherwise wouldn't have an, wouldn't have a natural market to prosper. All of those sort of policy goals are encompassed broadly within that, that statute. So, yeah, so.
Super helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, the statute is pretty, I mean, it gives us a lot of options. But by way of residential, it's pretty specific to four or more dwelling, because then it has to be, it's, it's a commercial.
But what, what it's not, I mean, to Daniel's point, it's not for, I'm, I'm, Full Brothers is coming in and building five thousand square foot.
Sure.
McMansions explicitly excluded and it's not for existing properties. It's not saying, you know, this, this part of the, of the town is struggling, so we're going to put a blanket overlay kind of abatement on it. No, it's only for that new development.
So that's super helpful. I, and I'm sorry to monopolize the time and certainly if other councilors have other questions, that's great. But then is it appropriate to include in a policy like this, specific language that specifies a, a council policy that for residential? These are examples. This is my own policy preference and certainly we can discuss as a council, but that a council would prefer that for residential, you know, developers that come before council looking for some kind of tax fixing agreement that they include a certain percentage or another kind of threshold of affordable housing units? Is that appropriate to include?
I don't think it's inappropriate.
I don't think it's inappropriate. I'd have to really, I mean, I've read the statutes quite a few times. I don't see anywhere where we would not be able to do that.
Yeah, we, we can add something like to the, I mean, run it by the attorney, of course, too.
Yeah, of course.
Let me, let me just, so yeah, result in the reuse or redevelopment of a distressed blader abandoned property. We don't have the word affordable housing anywhere. So what I would suggest, Matt, is like, will you want us to explicitly say affordable or you want to give us some thought and maybe throw out some language?
Yeah, and obviously it needs to be reviewed by legal and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Lawyer, but yeah, something, something that specifies, you know, because obviously, you know, we, we understand and we've just gone through this town center study and there are other, you know, studies that have happened in the town. And we understand the need for housing in a whole range of areas, but specifically affordable housing and, you know, those incentives, the kind of abatements that a council provides are very precious things. So, you know, just from a policy perspective, and there may be other councilors that, that agree or disagree with me, but I think that's, that's in some ways preferable. And if we can set it in stone in a policy like this, maybe.
Yeah, no, I agree. I mean, well, I think the, the overall sort of vision that I had were this, is we want to promote development that wouldn't occur but for the.
Yes.
Right, incentive. And how you say that, it's, it's easy for me to say that out loud. It's harder to put that, articulate that in a policy. But yeah, yeah, throw, throw us in the first, throw us a couple of sentences of vote points and we'll.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Councilor Page.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to add to Councilor Plur's comments. I agree a hundred percent. I think I don't, haven't and wouldn't vote for tax fixing agreements for market rate or luxury developments consistent with this policy as I understand it. I'd also want to endorse senior housing to the extent possible. I know there are fiscal realities for folks with affordable housing and with senior housing and maybe disincentives, but hopefully this would incentivize that kind of development. We've heard everybody here, if you knock on doors and go out in your community and talk to your neighbor, that we have so many folks who are older and would love to stay in town but can't afford to and don't want to still take care of a two thousand square foot, three or four bedroom house. So, yeah, if we can build that in and use that as leverage and an incentive. three or four bedroom house. So, yeah, if we can build that in and use that as leverage and an incentive, I agree hundred percent. Thank you.
Yeah, so I guess getting some language on that, that we can vote on.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
All right, moving on.
Item B.
So this is being taken.
Yeah, we're just leaving it on the agenda. Um reappointment of AMR for emergency medical services. Councillor Tanyakis, can you please read that resolution?
Sure. Resolve that the Newington Town Town Council hereby authorizes Jonathan Altshaul, Town Manager, to renew the town's contract with A M R for emergency medical services through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six, with no other changes in contract terms.
Motion by councillor Tanyakis, seconded by councillor Ford. Any discussion from councillors on this? Being none, all those in favor? Any opposed or abstained? Motion carries unanimously. All right, moving on to item C, administrative group classification pay plan. And I would ask our councillor basically, please read that resolution.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolve that the Newington Town Council hereby approved the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six classification pay plan for the administrative group pursuant to section nine zero two of the Newington Town Charter.
Second.
Motion by councillor Page, seconded by Deputy Mayorada. Any discussion on this from council? Being none, all those in favor? Any opposed or abstained? All right, that concludes old business. Moving along to tax refunds. Councillor Gonzalez, can you please read that resolution?
Sure. Resolved that property tax refunds in the amount of eight hundred fifty-seven dollars and twenty cents are hereby approved in the individual amounts and for those named on the request for refund of an overpayment of taxes certified by the revenue collector in this of which is attached to this resolution.
Second. My councillor Gonzalez, seconded by councillor Nagel. Any discussion on this? Being none, all those in favor? Any opposed or abstained? Motion carries unanimously. Moving right along. Next, we have uh minutes of previous meetings. We are looking for approval of the public hearing minutes from May thirteenth, the regular meeting minutes from May thirteenth and the regular meeting minutes from May twenty-seventh. Are there any uh clarifying comments or anything that needs to be changed, councillor?
I've I've read them all and um.
Riveting.
As far as I know, they're fun. They are riveting.
Very good.
I agree with acceptance.
All right, we have a motion for acceptance of all three uh meeting minutes, seconded by councillor Ford. Deputy Van Rada. Give your hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Nope, I just get it by accident.
All right, we had a motion by councillor Mankin, seconded by councillor Ford. Any discussion further on approving the regular meeting minutes and the special and the public hearing minutes? Being none, all those in favor? Any opposed or abstained? Our motion carries unanimously. All right, we are moving on to appointments, various appointments. Looks like various is just one um. Councillor Page, you want to do it? You guys want to do it together?
Oh, right.
Yeah, this is this is it.
This is a bipartisan appointment?
Resolve that the Newington Town Council hereby makes the following appointment. Commission on Aging and Disabled. Name is Shailene Pender, member. Address three one two Cedar Street apartment two B. Party D. Term immediate to eleven thirty twenty-six replaces Maureen Lynch.
Motion by councillor Page, seconded by councillor Ford. Any discussion on this appointment? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed or abstained? Carries unanimously. All right. Moving on to new business. And she have the early voting plan first, but can we do that last?
He's a funny guy.
You guys are patiently waiting and figuring, yeah, wake you up, get you get you excited.
That's one word for it.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for having us tonight. Jenny Semey from the registrar's office, Teresa Avy. So we're looking for approval for um using the town council chambers and conference room.
That's that's right.
Bless you for a um for early voting for the primary, which is September ninth twenty twenty-five and the um early voting would start um on Sunday August thirty-first and would continue Sunday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday and finish on the seventh of September. We are asking for a setup day of August twenty-ninth, which is a Friday. And um once we start setting up, we do have to key off or lock down the room. So there will be no one able to enter unless um we authorize it. There can be no um public meetings in this space during that time.
And just to clarify, that's if there is a primary.
If there's no primary, what happens?
Time to think and we're we might be off the hook for that.
Yes, and we're also looking for the early voting plan for um the election on November fourth and early voting would start on Monday, October twentieth and go till Sunday, November second.
And once again. We'd need the room for ten seventeen for setup, so the Friday prior.
Right. Thank you.
Is there a council meeting on those days that we would have to relocate?
Can you say the dates again? I'm sorry.
It's ten seventeen through the four, eleven four.
Through eleven four. And then what was the primary ones?
August twenty-ninth through September ninth.
We would.
The twenty eighth, okay.
So, yeah, we, yeah, we'd lose that, the the October meeting for sure, but we could.
Helen Nelson, maybe?
We would, would you need Helen Nelson, too, or?
No, we would not.
So we can, I can see about Helen. We can, I'm, I'll I'll look into it and make sure that all the details get sorted out before the next meeting, but probably we can make it almost certainly.
Uh we have some questions from councillors. Do you have other?
That's all the information. We do need approval, though, for Secretary of State.
Sure.
When you're able to do that.
When is that approval needed? Is there a deadline?
We're coming up on it.
We're coming up on it for the um the primary in September and we were just hoping that you would approve both.
Yeah.
With this, just so we don't have to take your time up in a couple of months and.
You just don't want to come back.
We only come when there's a lot of stuff on like.
But see, this will probably be old business, so it'll be earlier.
A proclamation where I've decided whereas the only time it's one.
Yeah, it's the only place. That's that's true. It's kind of a weird word. Uh councillor Nagle, a question?
I will, yes and no. Um I'm assuming that what you're asking for is similar to what you asked last year in terms of of use of the room and and the structure of what things were going on. That basically I wanted to clarify makes certain that was it. And I do know in terms of the council uh meeting that we, the last time this this happened, that we met uh in the multipurpose room in um in Parks and Rec. So there's another option, uh which whichever happens to work best. That's just what I wanted to point out and make certain that there were no differences in terms of how it was going to be handled and the usage of this room. And I guess it isn't.
We're gonna, it worked well the last three times, so we're just gonna keep it going that way.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Councillor Ford.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Councillor Nagle asked the question I was gonna ask, so thank you for being here and thank for all you do.
Councillor Drago.
And just um, I'm sure you're gonna remember to notify um because there are several other commissions that meet in this room. For example, TPZ meets the night after council meetings or whatever. There's conservation.
Yeah, I'll I'll take care of all that stuff, yeah.
Councillor Tanyakis?
Uh my question's not really specific to your plan, but um since this is like the second time with early voting, um do you guys have any like concrete um like plans that you're gonna take to get like the word out about early voting? Do you have like a different kind of approach this time around?
Since over sixty-five hundred people came for the presidential, I think people know about it. And we're just gonna go with the same plan. It worked very well um for the two primaries.
We we do have a few ideas, though. The traffic board.
Three donuts.
We we do have. Yeah, but we were happy with turnout last time, so this being a municipal, it's maybe we'll try a little harder.
That was, I that was interesting. I figured just sixty-five hundred people early voting the presidential.
Sixty-five hundred.
Uh what was in the total number of votes in town? Was it about fourteen thousand?
It was thirty-five, thirty-five percent?
Thirty-five percent was early voting and it's wasn't um the, it wasn't the highest turnout for presidential. I don't even think, I want to say it was.
You were disappointed.
I was disappointed because I'm in this um because a presidential with everything going on, you would have thought there would have been ninety-five, ninety-six percent. It was the mid-eighties, I think. I can't remember. They all start. Blending together.
That's very good, though. I'm glad that, I'm glad that it's getting utilized, at least for the for the general. The primaries, we we still gotta work with the Secretary of State on that, I think, but uh but for the general, I'm glad it's working well. Uh any other questions from councillors?
I won't come out unless there's a free donor, so.
We'll work on that. We might have a bubble machine.
Yeah.
We appreciate you guys coming out. I don't think there'll be any issue over this.
All right, awesome. Thank you.
Moving on to item B, sole source request for license plate reader technology.
Yeah, so I also have Lieutenant Amalfi, who's on double duty tonight. And he can, he can um uh help, because actually he is kind of intimate as as the uh lieutenant in charge of administrative services intimately involved in this. Um it was, you know what, Lieutenant, I'm just gonna turn it over to you.
Sure.
I'm Lieutenant Scott Amalfi with Newington. So we are asking for a sole source for Flock camera systems. I think it was twenty-one, we got the ARPA funding for the cameras to put around town. So we have approximately twenty-seven cameras to put up. Now we need the software to make the license plate technology work. So Flock is single source. They're kind of one-stop shop. They do the software. They'll do the installing. As you can see, the letter from the chief, all the surrounding towns are using them. They're basically the conglomerate in Connecticut and throughout the country right now.
So basically, in other words, if we didn't go with Flock, we would have no way of communicating when they saw the bad guy crosses, you know, the major intersection, or license gets picked up by the by the system. We'd have no way of of Weathersfield would have no way of knowing that, you know, bad guy heading their way or West Hartford or, you know, New Britain or whatever. So this is, that's really what it is, is so that all the communities can talk to each other, is that?
Yes, yep. It's uh sharing information between communities. It's a better solve crime.
And another thing about it, and again, Jimmy, if I uh correct me if I'm wrong, is there there is another vendor out there that does these license plate reader technology. But one one other justification for the sole source is that you can do it without running a utility conduit, an electric electrical conduit. So you can just do it with with solar. So it's might makes it much more versatile than than the other, the other vendor.
You don't need fiber, run to it, solar, everything, yeah. The standalone. I think you probably see the the poles, they're like the five or six foot poles on the side of the road. That's all Flock cameras.
Oh, okay.
I I guess my only real question, I think this is great. I'm glad we're getting you going. I guess my question is, once it's sort of up and running, is that like, does that become like pretty well-known to the bad guys? Like, do they avoid? Will they avoid us? Will this help kind of deter some of maybe some issues that we have?
Some, yes, most of the time, yeah, because they'll see the cameras and they're gonna want to avoid being seen. So they stop taking the main roads into Newington. That's the goal.
Very good. Good to me. I think this is great. Uh councillor Drago?
Um yeah, I'm curious. I'm sure you've talked to these other towns that are currently using it, West Hartford, Rocky Hill, whatever. Um so they're they're satisfied they're not having any issues.
Yep, no issues. Um it's actually increased the solvability of crimes. So using Flock nationwide has helped uh prevent or solve ten percent of crime, so.
That was my second question, is has there been a decrease or, I mean, not a decrease in crime, but an increase in being able to prosecute?
The solvability, yes.
Okay, and this technology courts are accepting as being able to prosecute.
Yes, public roadways, there's no, it's all public, freedom of information, we can do it. Flock will not let their data go to anyone else. So even their employees can't see the data. Everything gets purged in about thirty days. If we we want to save something for a criminal case, we can save it forever, but they they get rid of it.
Okay, thanks.
Councillor Gonzalez?
I just kind of had a question. Can you just explain a little bit of how this works? This is, this is not to give tickets. This is just if say there was an accident or somebody crazy was going, something crazy was happening, you could go back to the video and and see, is that?
Yes, so this is not the ticket, the speeding or the red light camera. This is something completely different. It's just, it's a camera, it's a little camera. And all it's doing is picking up your license plate in in the car.
Yeah.
As they go by. So if you have um just say a crime, uh of just a shoplifting occurred and you, a black Toyota, you could search black Toyota and on the plate, you can see all the black Toyotas in a timeframe. Then you can work back and see the license plate, see suspect information.
Yeah, great.
Thank you.
Oh, this is cool.
Deputy Mayorada?
Yeah, um you may have just answered this question, but um is this also real time?
Yes.
Say that you're, if you're tracking, there's, there was a crime that occurred in Newington.
Yes, it is.
Rocky Hill.
Yep.
And you know what that vehicle is, then in real time, you can watch that, say, okay, it's gonna be crossing here and it will be there and then.
Yes, you can set certain parameters. So all the stolen vehicles in Connecticut, they're gonna be entered in there. So we actually recently caught one at at Lowe's. So Lowe's has its own cameras. And another benefit of Flock is that private companies have it. So Lowe's has it courtyard by Marriott. Foxborough condominiums and Glen Oaks all have their own Flock cameras.
So it's intertwined.
And it all connects. We all have connections. So when a stolen car gets stolen, parks at Lowe's, pops on their camera, we'll we'll get a notification. We can go to Lowe's parking lot.
Wow.
And so you add, and so just to clarify, so like, if 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 that stolen vehicle goes by the the license, uh the the LPR, does does it get, who gets notified? Does dispatch get notified?
Our dispatch will get it, an alert in the in the dispatch center and they put it out to us.
Okay, got it, got it, yeah.
So, yeah, and Flock's pushing for residents to get it, companies to get it. They give a discount to them, so then the whole community's connected.
Councillor Tanyakis?
Um is this something that's like available to the public as far as like like FOIA or something like that, or?
Good question.
Um no, because we need a reason to search plates. So we can't just go, I can't just go search cameras for no reason. So every, we, every time I go in, there's a a database, I gotta put a reason and a case number. So I can't just go in, like I said, willy-nilly and do whatever I want. So you need a criminal justice reason to do this. So you can't, no one could FOIA just.
Just like whatever.
Right, I want Glen Oaks for the last thirty days. Because we can't even do it.
Yeah.
Councillor Ford?
Thank you, Mayor. Um it's just a quick question. Where are these mounted? Are they mounted on a, like a pole attached to a?
It's gonna be a little different, yeah. So Flock, if Flock provides it, we're kind of hybrid right now, because we have our own cameras and then we're putting the software on them and then Flock will have their own cameras. But so Flock will have those smaller poles on the side of the road, you'll notice, and you'll, they're distinguishable because of the solar panels.
On it, yeah.
Yeah, so they'll they'll have the solar panel on it. We have some that are gonna be hardwired and we're just doing points of entry into the town. Uh and then main intersection, Cedar, Willard, uh Main Willard, and then all the where they're coming in from, Weathersfield, Hartford, Berlin, New Britain, West Hartford.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, councillor. Any other comments from council? Councillor Drago?
So, okay. So this will be utilized for like a crime has, I mean, a real crime has been committed and then the license plate goes out and blah blah blah. So it's not gonna be like to track, you know, like the ATV riders that come through town or, you know, or
They don't have license plates. Now that, this won't help them back.
Thank you, councillor. Any other comments or questions, councillor? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to item C, liability agent of record.
Yeah, I the we went out for, so we have a. Yeah, I, the, we went out for, so we have Karma, as is actually, provides the insurance for private casualty workers come. Uh, the, the, the insurance committee, AJ, I guess AJ and Tim, is that right?
Yep.
Yeah. Um, do you guys wanna speak to it?
Uh, we, we interviewed uh three candidates, and um USI just came out on top, our assistant manager is happy with the service that they've actually been getting with them, confident in their ability to, to get us the, the best deal on insurance. Um, so, so yeah, it ended up being uh just a unanimous vote, a clear decision.
Uh, they've been an agent of record for a while now, right?
Uh, yeah, uh, yeah, it seemed like a very long time.
Yeah. Any other comments from counselors on this? Been pretty straightforward. All right, very good. We'll move on to item D, budget transfer. And she, Janet is here, you've been waiting for this moment, Janet.
Oh, I'm here. I'm here. Um, we've done this in the past, but just trying to give you guys an idea. Uh, when we go out to bond, occasionally they will come back and give you more than what you went out to bond for, it's, it's called premium. And when we get that premium, you can use it for different things, you can use it for, to cover the closing cost of the bond, or you can use it to offset future um interest payments. We, when we went out to bond in two thousand twenty-three, we did have some remainder um premium left to use to offset our um interest payments for this year. And so the three hundred and seventy-three thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars is what I'm looking to transfer into our operational budget to offset this year's interest payments on our bonds.
Awesome. Any questions from counselors on this? She's pretty straightforward, citing that we had some leftover money that we can put for.
Keep the interest rate down.
That's great. Very good. Any other comments, questions?
All right, thank you so much for hanging with us, Janet, we really appreciate it.
No problem, thanks.
Thank you. Um, item E, tax suspension list. Another, anything on that, Jonathan?
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the number is, is somewhat higher than last year and the past couple of years, and um basically, on the motor vehicle side, the reason for that is, I understand it is um is that the, the, the DMV basically added more, because of basically a COVID backlog, they added more vehicles back into the mix. Um, so that's, that's really the reason that the number jumped from two hundred and eleven thousand and changed last year to two hundred and ninety-six. It's not, it's not, doesn't necessarily reflect the worsening of the economy, or, you know, people, more people unable to pay their, their, their bills just the DMV just catching up with some of the stuff that had piled up over the pandemic.
There you go. Questions from Counsel on this? Move on. Item twelve, written oral communications to the town manager.
Yeah, a few things to bring to your attention, the first one is, uh, uh, earlier today, uh, the, uh, town, I should really say Heather Shanti, Jen Moserouk, uh, Lauren Reins, and uh Gabriella Morales uh in the TMO office, I had nothing to do with this, I really didn't lift a finger, uh, put on a fantastic health fair for the benefit of all um town and and Board of Ed uh central office employees. Uh, very well attended, probably had a good two hundred and fifty people there, lots of vendors there doing, you know, health screenings, get your blood pressure. Not good news for the town manager, but that's my problem. Uh, you know, and other vendors, local vendors, massage, you know, sort of people uh marketing their, 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 their local businesses, marketing their products to um to town employees, uh, very well attended, we do have some leftovers, if you'd like some uh either sugar or vegetables on your way out. Not, not me, right, not me, right, um. Uh, also, um, uh, last week, uh, the town pools facility building, project building committee uh approved, uh, and we've uh conducted two interviews with candidates who had submitted proposals for uh evaluations of the of the two pools, and um the, the committee voted to award the contract to Weston and Sampson for fifty-five thousand five hundred dollars, which is slightly less than what um uh council had, had transferred into that CIP account, so that work will get started, it won't really get started in earnest until the end of the pool season and mid-August, so the pools have to be drained so that the proper evaluation can occur, but I did wanna make sure that that was on your radar. Um, in addition, I have some sort of bad news about the Cedar Street sidewalks, I, I don't know if it was last meeting or the meeting before that, during my manager's report, I talked about DOT expanding that Cedar Street sidewalk project to basically connect to uh Vincent Drive. Subsequent to that manager's update, uh, we were notified by DOT that they plan to drop that component of the project from, 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 from this, basically, from, from the, from the project. The concern uh was that some of the right-of-way issues were thorny enough uh that a- as well as the potential utility relocations were collectively were thorny enough that DOT upper-level management was concerned that we wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to go out to bid for during the two thousand twenty-six construction uh cycle, so unfortunately, that little component is off the table, however, DOT provided us with assurances that they wanna see the project done, but it's probably done as part of either a lot, a lots of grant, or an urban action grant, or, or a steep grant, or something like that, that they would assist with, and remember that under that new master municipal agreement we have with DOT, they, they help us with those right-of-way things, so hopefully, it's a, it's a small setback, but the, the work can still get done. And that's all I have for today.
Question from Counsel?
Just quick, Mayor, I just wanna say thank you, Jonathan, I often text you at Friday at around twelve p.m.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Twelve oh one, yeah.
So I really, sincerely, I appreciate that you have been so diligent in getting answers back to those questions and, and just all your hard work with staff, so thank you so much.
Counselor Tinianakis?
Uh, I'll add to that, because I emailed Jonathan at like seven-thirty Sunday night, and then you emailed me back, which I was not expecting, so um you don't have to do that.
Thank you, Counselor. All right, any other comments from Council? All right, we'll move on to Council liaison committee reports. Counselor Gonzalez?
Um, the youth adult council met, and they are planning on doing another sports equipment swap. Um, the collection is going to start on August first, and it will be at Karma's Closet, that's where um you can drop off your sports, um, used sports equipment, and then um the actual dates for the swap will be August sixteenth and seventeenth. So spread the word on that, and you'll see some flyers. And the Human Rights Commission also met, and they're doing the Community Service Day, July twenty-fourth in conjunction with um Human Services and the Park and Recs. And it is um celebrating the thirty-fifth anniversary of the ADA by supporting local organizations, and um there will be a lot of uh good stuff out there, so July twenty-fourth from six-thirty to eight-thirty.
I'm supposed to be handing out ice cream at that thing, so.
There is free ice cream.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Handing it out, so good to know the date, thank you.
We can.
Counselor Nagel?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I recently attended the Senior and Disabled Center Board's uh meeting, they discussed their successful volunteer dinner. Uh, also, we were informed that uh because of CIP monies that were given, uh, that security camera plan is going to be in effect, as well as a printer that the library, uh, the senior center desperately has needed, uh, the gift shop will be closed uh for the next, uh, for this month, uh, so they can regroup and restock things and mark them. Uh, nutrition program, uh, they did an application for twenty thousand grand, uh, twenty-five twenty thousand dollar grant to uh uh finance uh ongoing needs. Uh, unfortunately, uh, uh, Senior Center uh did not get a dial-a-ride grant, so they're looking for ideas for fundraisers, not only for nutrition, but to fill that gap. Uh, the board uh voted to waive fees again, as they've done um uh previous years, they did during uh COVID, um, they found that uh people to renew their memberships will donate far more than what they would get from fees, so they decided to go that way, the building is uh being um updated in terms of uh flooring and uh the HVAC uh system, which has been going on. And there is a brochure which comes out each month, which I have a copy, which gives all kinds of information about programs that are, have happened and will happen, I won't read them all, there are a great many of them. Um, such things about caring for hips and knees, nutrition and lung disease. Um, uh, aging ain't for sissies. Uh, new kind of nutrition presentations, uh, it's a special one, most people may be interested in. It's on Friday, uh, June twentieth, from ten a.m. to eleven a.m. And there are more programs as well, which are very uh interesting, most of them uh you need to uh register for, because there is limited room uh in ter- in terms of if they're held within the Senior Center itself. Um, also, last night, the library board uh met. The friends, the, the library uh uh are regrouping for their next uh book sale. Uh, and uh they also shared uh an event that's going to happen tomorrow. Uh, but they announced it early, uh, that uh um our Deputy Mayor Rada is being presented with a uh certificate of recognition, I believe that's the form, it may be different, and I don't think, since they've released it to us, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Didn't say anything?
The library board uh 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 discussed about their annual meeting, which we held in September, uh, which uh um, you need to look, uh, look for it, they uh, uh, when it comes up, it'll be mentioned, um. Um, they are upgrading uh their user experience for uh people who uh need to use printers and other electronic devices at the library. Um, they've applied for a grant for, for that as well. Um, I talked about the book sale before, they're, they're having their meeting tomorrow, which the public is invited to at the library at, at seven P.M., I believe, for those who can't attend. Um, uh, they also uh discussed various uh plans uh for uh the uh annual meeting and other things in the fall, since they will not be meeting uh in July and August, nor does the Senior Center, unless some um, emergency comes up uh for them to meet. Um, the um, um, Lark uh uh spoke uh that uh they are moving along with the um assessment of the building uh for when eventually uh uh it'll be presented realistically for, once again, uh renovation, and that's ongoing. Um, they were going to meet on the twenty-sixth of June, but decided to wait until July, since there is no uh pressing referendum uh deadline, which they decided not to go with uh this month. Uh, they also discussed their successful road race, which uh several people here participated in one way or another. Um, I don't believe there were any uh specifics given in terms of monies that they made at that time. Um, uh, but um we were told that uh three hundred and fifty-four racers uh were participating in that, which is a goodly number, and they also discussed how to improve things that uh could be tweaked uh from what happened uh this year, Bill Rogers once again showed up uh to support it, and we all know who Bill Rogers is, marathon runner, uh, who also was here quite often, because he was here for the scholars' breakfast as well and spoke, so uh the app gives you an update in terms of those two uh uh boards.
Thank you, Counselor. She saw these boards and commissions getting the summer off, it's nice. Counselor Floyd?
Thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to share that um uh many of us here attended the Human Services Award Ceremony um last week, I believe it was, uh, and I know the mayor got the chance to share the proclamation that we had passed at council honoring those uh volunteers wheels while they were there in the room, which was very special, so we appreciate all the work that they do. And then I know that um Counselor Gonzalez, I know they had the great privilege of attending the adult ed graduation, uh, I think that same evening. Um, and uh drove quickly there, and um and we, you know, think that that is one of our favorite events that we have gotten the chance to do as counselors, it's very inspirational, so we wish those uh five graduates um uh all the best, and uh appreciate uh all that that program does for the community.
Thank you, Counselor. Deputy Mayor Rada?
Uh, yeah, just to follow up um with Counselor Nagel. Um, did you mention the adult and children's reading, summer reading program?
No, I didn't.
That, and I don't, I can't remember the dates, they're usually two different dates, but it, they'll be within the next week or two.
Right, I don't have the specific dates.
Yeah, but there, there will be, and I um think uh Lisa said that the uh name this, this time will be Level Up. Um, also, uh, we can really applaud the um children and youth librarians, because um we were told that all elementary schools and one middle school have been visited by the librarians to introduce the summer reading program, so you know, the, the library is, there are no walls to the library, essentially, that um the librarians are out in the community as much as the community is, is coming to the library. Um, the only other thing is, uh, they mentioned at, towards the end of our meeting, that um there are two open board positions, one Republican and one corporate. So if they, they're asking if anybody has um names, or if they can think of someone that might be interested to fill those two positions to um let them know. And that's it.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any other updates from counselors? Seeing none, we will move on to public participation, and if you're in the room and like to speak in public participation, please step up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. If you overzoom, please use the raise hand function, we will alternate between in the room and overzoom. All right, seeing none, we will move on to remarks by counselors, any comments from counselors in tonight's meeting? Constable Tinianakis?
Wanna congratulate the deputy mayor for being recognized.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll move on to informational items. Um, just reiterate what was stated earlier, Thursday night, food is uh New England Goes Country? Friday, Food Truck Friday, that makes it easy to remember.
Yeah, it's easy.
But those are some really cool activities we have going on right now, remember those benefit the fireworks, which are always amazing at the Extravaganza, so I hope to see somebody there. Any other important? Yeah, bring your cowboy boots, and watch out for ferret or horse. Yeah, and goose poop, yeah. All right, very good, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Counselor Porter, a second by Counselor Makey, we'll call it that way. Any discussion on adjournment, seeing none, all is in favor? Any opposed, seeing none, all right, motion carries unanimously, we are adjourned nine oh nine P.M. Great meeting, everybody.
Speed round.